Greetings, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call the June 16th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to Order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Gary Sodz for the invocation.
If you would, bow your heads. Dear and merciful Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight to make decisions for the wonderful people of Union County. Watch over us and watch over your people of Israel as they defend themselves from the forces of evil and darkness. Thank you for all your many blessings, and we humbly beseech thee in the name of your son. Amen.
One will please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. We do have some lists for that, and we will start with the ones that signed up online. So we'll, um, this is, so we'll, so we will start with, um, the first, we've got the first person here. Let me read this statement real quick. "We will recognize the speakers, 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 signed for informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of the remarks. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or a separate meeting, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board." The first person who signed up online is Jessica Lee. Okay, it does not appear that Jessica is with us tonight, so that will take us to Kelly O'Neil. The next person who signed up online is Tina Sykes Mosley. Okay, that will bring us to the people who signed up in person. And the first speaker is Reagan Shaw.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Shaw, and I'm a UCS parent. So, this budget. Um, Gary, we have certainly had our differences in the past, but we could at least agree that our public school teachers and certified staff need to get paid properly. Yeah, agree on that. Um, their salaries are bottom of the barrel in the rankings. It's pretty pathetic. So here it is, the time to decide if you're going to pay teachers here at the local level. If you approve this budget, you haven't given UCS enough money to give teachers even a tiny pay rise. The other items, the additional funding package, as Mrs. McLamb explained it to us, uh, funding for two extra nurses, modest reorganization of the EC, um, to meet urgent needs, an extra month's admin to cover the change from Power School to Infinity, or whatever it's called. Um, it doesn't seem like these are things that can be cut either. So how are we gonna give teachers any kind of raise with those figures? It doesn't seem like we will be able to. Fort Mill's starting salary, as far as I can see, for teachers is fifty thousand. Um, why can't our teachers at least make that? There was so much energy in this room against SB 205 or HB 765, whatever the iteration is. Um, you were gonna primary anyone who voted against it, you were gonna issue resolutions, all this kind of energy. Where is that energy to get our public school teachers and certified staff paid properly? If you claim to love our teachers, but you won't pay them properly, you're just being phony. You couldn't care less about our public schools if you won't get our staff paid. Please don't pass this budget. Lastly, we have lost too many youth in Union County to gun violence. Please speak out against the concealed carry for eighteen-year-olds. We will lose more kids in this county if this is allowed to become law. Thank you.
The next speaker is Randy Down.
Good evening. God bless you. My name is Randy Down. My family and I live in Union County, Wesley Chapel. And, um, I have the honor to serve in law enforcement. Um, as a sworn police officer, I work in Union County, but at a smaller department, which is not the sheriff's department. Uh, my reason to speak before you all tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity, um, is in response to Gary's, um, comment, Commissioner Gary's comment for May 19th. I'd just be part of it, that you want to again state, um, your determination, that staff working with the sheriff's department determine that we have, what we have to do to curb their attrition rate. And we cannot afford to lose, uh, good people, and you go on with that, and I'm with you a hundred percent, brother. Obviously, you're talking about employee turnover, and quite honestly, out of all transparency, and hopefully the sheriff back there and Deputy Chief Underwood can hear me on this one. Um, I would greatly welcome the opportunity to work at Union County Sheriff's Department. Um, deputies I've talked to, they absolutely love it, and I have great, very respect, and I, it's an honor for my family and I to have them as our, um, sheriff's department. If I was ever graced with that opportunity, my preference would be as an SRO versus a patrol deputy, mostly because of the rotating shifts that they work, as many of them switch every thirty days from day shift to night shift. For me personally, rotating shifts would keep me from serving as a deputy with them. The many challenges even, even personally, uh, but also long-term impact of shift work on health and well-being. Um, I talk to deputies, and that is a challenge for them as well. You know, there's documentation, and I'm not here to, um, um, share with all, all that in my time, but obviously, there can be increase of cancer, cardiovascular, heart disease, um, uh, gastrointestinal disorders, mental health disorders, but, um, obesity, type D, diabetes, and things like that. And this certainly by no means is a slam or criticism against the sheriff or his department by any shift, by any means. Every department is ran a certain way. Um, one thing I heard of the rotating shift is because of the court system in the sense that it's a lot easier to schedule for all office deputies when they are working day shift at nine o'clock. Um, I've had the opportunity in the past to work in Mecklenburg County, and one of the things they do, obviously, they schedule the officers for afternoon court. Perhaps going, um, going from rotating shifts to permanent shift, uh, uh, in Union County would be have something to have a conversation about. So, Gary, respectfully, sir, um, that's one of my things that I'm just bringing up, is that perhaps, um, that can be more appealing to deputies or those that are seeking employment with the sheriff's department, to draw them there, but also keep them there. Cause obviously, there's been a lot of conversation about pay, and that's, and other factors. But for me personally, I'm just speaking for myself, that's a big factor for me as, uh, in regards to the rotating shift. Thank you for your time. God bless you.
The next two items on our agenda are public hearings for rezonings. Before opening the pub, the first public hearing, I will read the rules that apply to members of the public for both of these public hearings. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents in Union County, and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of the remarks. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing only. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. The first public hearing is item twenty-five dash three sixty-five for conditional rezoning, 2025 CZ zero zero two. Gordon, I will open the public hearing and recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner, for comments from the county.
Madam Chair, are you, are you able to see it on your screen? Okay, we'll go ahead then. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Manager Matthews. This is a conditional rezoning, 2025 dash CZ dash zero zero two, Gordon, for the name of the applicant. This is a request to rezon a portion of a parcel in the Jackson Township on Mary Elizabeth Church Road. This is, uh, from RA forty-two Light Industrial to allow an existing legal non-conforming automobile manufacturer, automobile repair and maintenance facility to, um, expand beyond the legal non-conforming portion. The site plan is shown here. This is on Mary Elizabeth Church Road. The portion that would be rezoned is the front portion shown as proposed lot two. It'd be subdivided out. The parcel actually goes around, there's a connector piece that goes over to the house that's off the map. And the area that would be rezoned is, is really for storage. This would be gravelled. Um, the potential future building here for, um, material storage and for, um, service work. Existing conditions, you see some vehicle storage on there. That's for the legal non-conforming portion. It's been in existence for approximately a decade. Um, you can see north and south of Mary Elizabeth Church Road, so a large lot, um, residential areas, a church across the street. On the opposite side is the existing, um, actual facility where the maintenance work is done. This is also legal non-conforming. In terms of development status, there are, uh, large areas that are undeveloped, but there are a fair number of homes along Mary Elizabeth Church Road. Environmental features, and this includes the aerial, there are a couple man-made ponds in the back of the property. One of them would be used for stormwater purposes. So you'd have this cleared area draining back this cleared areas from a couple years ago, and it shows the extent of the disturbance which resulted in the, uh, code violation issue that motivated the rezoning. So this area that I have the cursor over right here is allowed to exist regardless of the rezoning decision because it's been in existence for, um, longer than the state, um, requires for allowing a legal non-conforming use to, um, occur. But the area to the south, uh, was cleared in the last couple of years, and so that's really the area you're talking about for the rezoning. In terms of zoning in the area, it's all RA forty. Transportation, relatively low volume area. Potter and Tom Starnes have approximately twelve to thirteen hundred vehicles per day. There's no traffic count established for Mary Elizabeth Church Road, and there's no funded projects in the area. Land use plan, this all calls for rural residential, which is approximately one acre lots, and agricultural uses. Cause it's commercial in nature, the school system was not consulted, and water and sewer are not available to the site, so they'd utilize well and septic. Community meeting was held in April with one attendee. They just had questions about the proposed use and, uh, what would happen if it were rezoned? Could additional uses occur on site? We explained that with the conditional rezoning, you're limited to the site plan and the conditions associated with it. And we did have one other resident submit written comments opposing it due to concerns over appearance if they were to sell their, their home in the future. And two, uh, residents spoke at the land use board meeting last month. One was for and one was against. We traditionally consult the nearby municipalities, but Waxaw was too far away to be, um, considered for outreach. So in terms of the positives and negatives, it, it's identified as, in terms of negatives, this is rural residential, and this proposed light industrial designation is not consistent with the land use map. Uh, it could motivate future rezonings for other industrial uses inconsistent with the plan. And the rezoning is in, is in response to a zoning violation, and the proposed use is several times larger than what they're allowed to do with the legal non-conforming portion in order to, um, accommodate all the area that was recently cleared. The positives are that there is a, uh, legal non-conforming portion of the business across the street, so it's part of an existing business. Uh, would not create a significant traffic impact because the operations are already in existence. It would increase business opportunities for Union County resident, and their site plan has gone through our review process and can't meet our standards. Um, however, we recommend a denial. The planning board had a, a fairly robust discussion about this with the positives and negatives, and, um, they ultimately voted denial on a very split vote, four to three. So I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is also here with additional information.
I would like for the applicant to step forward, please.
Hello, Madam Gordon. Thank you for your time. Uh, Union County resident, Jackson Township. Thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Gordon, who is your primary customer base?
Everybody, the general public, the, the community. Um, I primarily work on daily drivers, the, the vehicles that you guys would use to commute to and from your jobs, wherever you're going. Um, that's, that's my primary. Um, uh, my, my shop is at my parents' house. It's a, a forty by forty with a two-ten-foot tall door, so I'm, I'm pretty limited to what I can and can't do. Um, however, I, I occasionally will work on some medium and heavy-duty vehicles, but those vehicles belong to my, my local community. My owners, operators that live in our community, our farmers. Um, what I'm able to do to these vehicles because of my facility is, is small, is very limited. It's basically just the stuff that will get them going, you know, save them a tow bill, get them a little longer on what they have. Minor repairs, you know, simple stuff. I don't have the facility to, to put a big truck in my shop and tear it down, but I do have the resources to, to do emissions equipment repairs to get a, a farmer, you know, from being back to field or, or vice versa. Um, local owner operators is one that lives on our, our street, um, two, three driveways down. He's, he's owner-operator. I do very little for him, but I can't offer him a lot because again, my facility is small, but we try to help our community and everybody that we can. Um, but our primary business is, you know, smaller, everyday vehicles that like I say, everybody would, would drive. would drive, but not limited to those vehicles.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Hams.
One of my questions is, how many vehicles do you have there that are sitting there that the owners have not claimed that they're taking up space, if you will? Because everybody's seen the yards where there's 50 vehicles that are not tagged, that are just sitting there, that are creating an eyesore to the community.
If I may, a quick backstory. Originally, all the land on that side of the road belonged to my great uncle. When he passed away, it was split up into thirds. The area that I am, the legal non-conforming that was grandfathered in, if you will, when previously all that land was planted in pines for harvest. Before they sold the land and developed half, and so what they did, they came in and they cut everything to the right-hand side of the property. They cleared it for development, and in that center section, which I own, they came in and they thinned it. That lot that I have been using for years is where they set up their equipment. They stumped it, and that's where they had their operations in and out while they logged it. So, we didn't clear that. We just, once I purchased the land, we took advantage of that clearing. Now, fast forward again, that land was planted in pines. I bought the land in 2013. I built the small house that you can see on it, and my wife and I lived there. She's pregnant now with our fifth, so a couple of years ago, we had to sell that house and we built a house next door. That's why it's subdivided the way it is. During that process, I had to contact the US Forest Service. The pine started to die, and I mean, it was very rapid. So, I had them come out and look, and an agent said we had pine beetles, and we had no choice. You've got to cut them down. So, he helped me find somebody to harvest what little bit I had. And then just while we were doing the grading on the house site, I had him go ahead and stump everything while I was there to clean up the mess. COVID came, and we've always been really good about getting a vehicle in and getting it out. When COVID came, the parts industry just went berserk. It took forever to get stuff. And so, we started utilizing that area. There were some times where, I mean, it was months lead time on backward before we'd get parts. And so, the picture you see in the complaint, there were several vehicles that had to sit there for a lengthy amount of time. Now, that's not the case. Now, I will say, I don't feel like the parts industry has recovered. As you used to, I could make one phone call, get a part. Basically, that day or the next day, some things are a week out. So, occasionally, vehicles will sit there for a week, but nothing there is unclaimed. Everything, you know, we don't do junkyard or like restorations. If your vehicle breaks down, you call me, I'll fix it and get it back to you as quickly as I can.
Are there any vehicles there now?
No. Oh, sorry.
How many vehicles are sitting there now that haven't been picked, that you're not currently working on?
Everything that's there now is currently being worked on, whether it's waiting on a partner. There are two there now that, if school just got out, so they arranged to bring a vehicle, drop it off, get some work done while they're on vacation. So, but nothing long-term is there. We just, that's, most of the things we do, we, you know, it's fixable.
Commissioner Hams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So, how many employees do you have at your shop?
Pre-COVID, I had two. Now, I've got three full-time guys on the weekends. I've got two to three part-time guys that will come and help me get some things done.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sides.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see from the pictures. Is the property fenced?
No, sir, it's not fenced. There is a pretty extensive row of hedge, if I may. Can I use this real quick? I stole some images from Google Maps. I think this is going to work, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, go ahead.
Your word, does it matter which one of these I use to? This is a video that I took from Google Images. You can see, let me see if I can pause it real quick. The cursor is right in the way. Right here, when I hit play, you should see where it was. This was taken in November of '24. So, you can obviously still see there's some leaves, but the majority of those have gone. And so, like I say, this is just kind of scrolling through, and you can see a little bit. Now, this is the thinnest part of that hedge that we left when it was cut. And then, obviously, the site plan, I didn't realize when I made the site plan it was required, but I'm, obviously, I opted to put in a natural hedge because I felt like it was less invasive than a fence, but a natural hedge all around. I don't want my neighbors, I don't want to see it. I mean, I understand. I understand their complaint. It's just unfortunately, I don't want to say unfortunate, because fortunately, we've gotten busier and we could use and take advantage of this. Some of my parts have come on freight trucks. Obviously, my driveway's too small, they can't get in my shop driveway. So, here lately, we've been having to unload at the road. This expansion will allow the freight trucks to be able to pull in and me to unload safely from there. Some vehicles that get wrecked or in, we can get in the parking lot, but some of them we've had to unload roadside. So, this expansion would obviously free up the road area, make it a little safer as well.
But you don't have wrecker service yourself?
No, no, sir.
If you don't tow, you don't reclaim?
No, no, sir.
You're prepared?
Right, yep, yes, sir.
Do you have any plans for expansion and lift and video building, car facility and expansion plans in the future?
No, sure, no, I did, I hope my parents live forever, and I'm able to use this shop as forever. You will notice on the site plan, I did propose a building in this area just in case something happens and they decide to sell, and I mean, I don't want to lose my business. Obviously, I don't want to have to split and say, oh, you can buy this house, but I need access to this shop and right away to your driveway. So, I did include that, just, but even that, if you look at, it's not big enough for tractor-trailer. Tractor-trailer repair, the land use board, I think, had an issue with, I wouldn't necessarily tell them, I wouldn't agree to not work on medium-heavy-duty equipment. But it's just, I don't do tractors, I'd be, you know, it's not, but again, I don't want to be limited not being able to help neighbors. Harvest season comes, I do a lot for farmers, more so is on the road and in the field, but you know, there is an occasional time where they'll have to bring something in that parking lot, I'll change a park for them, hook my computer to them, send them out. So, I didn't want to be limited to that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for being here to answer those questions.
Thank you for the opportunity and the time.
So, we did have one person signed up to speak on this, Michelle?
Brunette.
Michelle here?
Michelle Brunette, and I apologize, I'm naturally kind of loud. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I am a 35-year resident of Union County. I bought the 13 acres on Potter roadside of Mr. Gordon 23 years ago. I've been concerned about his property use for the last five years, but I did not report or complain because I didn't want to cause trouble for my neighbor. I respect his right to operate a business. And his father had been there forever. He was there before we moved in, before I bought my property, so that was great, fine. I'm here now because rezoning is permanent. It's forever. Once it's done, it's done. Mr. Gordon currently has a variance or exception where he is allowed to use a half-acre for business, but he regularly exceeds that. I own 13 acres, I know what a half-acre looks like. So, his storage frequently, he's already violating the agreement he's supposed to be operating under. At the May land use meeting, it was obvious that the board really wanted to approve his request for rezoning with the condition that he not service or park the trailer portion of tractor-trailer units because of the potential damage to the nearby roads. Mr. Gordon argued he wouldn't do that anyway because his soil and parking area would not support the weight. Last week, for sure, he definitely had a full-size tanker truck, not a little septic truck, but a full-size tanker parked on the property for about 10 days. And the thing about, I'm sorry, family daily driver vehicles, no, these are cherry pickers. There are larger vehicles parked on that property, like the big 350 things, big panel trucks like Duke Power uses, large box trucks. They're not daily drivers. I live next door, I see it, I drive by it frequently. So, here is my question, and I am the one that sent the letter regarding the property values. I am very concerned about my property value. It is an eyesore. And when my property was listed, that was the first thing everybody asked my Realtor because it was so visible from her aerials, was what is that next door? Okay, so, the other thing is, I question whether there's anything to stop him. Am I all done? I got one more sentence here, two more.
Finish.
Anything to stop him from filling in the current pond areas and using the full 2.6 acres for tractor-trailer storage? Because that seems to be, since he argued against that one condition, that really seems to be where he's headed. So, my question, if he had applied for this rezoning five years ago, before he cleared, graded, gravelled, and started using the parcel for light industrial, would y'all have granted the rezoning back then? If it was not, I mean, if he came to you five years ago, when it was still heavily wooded and all in pine trees, and said, I want to go light industrial? And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Can I address?
No, I'm afraid not. I will now close this public hearing. The next public hearing on our agenda is item 25-366 for conditional rezoning 2024-ZZ-011, Union Landscaping. I will open the public hearing and again, recognize Bjorn Hansen for comments from county
Evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Manager Matthews. This is a second conditional rezoning request to address a code violation. This is in the Monroe Township near the airport. It's to rezone a single parcel of approximately 2.4 acres from RA 20 to RA 40. This includes a special use permit for the total list of uses that are being proposed because it's a greenhouse plus a landscaping business. There's a site plan that goes along with this proposal. It is on Sanford Lane. When you see the aerials, you see that these uses are essentially already all in existence. You have two driveways that are gated, you have a pond which is used for stormwater. It's a nursery area on the east and south. Then, the middle is gravelled with a lot of parking for vehicles and the like. You can see from the photos that the business is in operation, family, single-family residential surrounding the site, although there are large areas of industrial that I'll show you on the zoning map. Monroe is immediately to the north. They did not have comments or concerns about this proposed rezoning. Gold Mine is immediately to north, an airport, so the airport is up here as well. Terms of development status, subdivision to the south, single-family residential, there's a church down the street, and then to the north, it's largely vacant, undeveloped yet. Terms of environmental features, there's a stream of flood plain to the west, there is a natural gas pipeline on the western edge of the property. You can see where it's cleared, but none of those features are on the site itself. Terms of zoning, you can see the light industrial zoning immediately to the west and to the north. These were approved in the last 20 years. And then, RA 20 for the remainder of the property in the area. Terms of transportation, Sanford Lane has approximately 1,400 vehicles per day, gold mines nearly 6,000 per day. There's no funded road improvements in the area, and no improvements are required as a part of this site. Terms of the land use plan, it's kind of messy. There is an employment center dot on the map. It's a large circle, and it technically is immediately adjacent, but that implies some precision that isn't really there. It's a employment center which is focused around the airport. And single-family residential to the south, which means with utilities, approximately two units per acre, which is similar to the existing zoning that's in place. And the gray area is Monroe, so we obviously don't do land use planning for them. Again, because this was a commercial proposal, the school system was not consulted, this would utilize well and septic service. Community meeting was held in early May, two attendees, they were supportive of the proposal and didn't have any concerns, no changes were made. No one spoke against this at the May land use board meeting, and again, Monroe didn't have any comments. The applicants are here as well to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions?
Land use board recommended approval. Yep, I should get to that last slide. Thank you, Manager Matthews. Yeah, thank you. So, we're recommending approval. Planning board recommended approval. The negatives are that this is single-family residential, and the uses are commercial, and that it could facilitate additional rezonings of a similar nature. However, the greenhouse has been in existence for many years. It's the landscaping business that caused the issue. This wouldn't create a significant traffic impact. It's on the edge of an employment center. Realistically, it's influenced by the commercial center designation due to the two rezonings that this body approved in the last 20 years. It would increase business opportunities, and the site plan can meet our standards.
Is the applicant here and would like to speak? Hi, welcome. You can have.
I'm in Union Landscaping.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. If you have anything you would like to say, up to 15 minutes or less.
I don't have anything.
Hi, I'm the wife, my name is Adriana. Thank you for your time. I would just have a question, and since we are, don't have any problems, we are, everything's going on well, is there a possible way that maybe we can up this up and, I don't know, get our approval? We have a lot of plans coming up.
Yes.
Thank you. So, it is typically the board's practice that you wait until the next meeting. However, we don't have another meeting in two weeks because this is our summer break. Our next meeting is not until July 14th, so obviously, that is about a month, a little over, about a month away. You have, in the past, waived those rules when you've had no opposition. So, again, that is a board call, but I do want to make you aware of that.
So, we, if we choose to do that, would, tonight, would we need to make that motion after everyone's had a chance to ask questions?
You would need to make that motion this evening, yes, to consider it at the end of the meeting. And you may have some other business that you need to consider as well prior to that.
To amend the agenda and add it to business?
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to say tonight? Is there anything else you'd like to say tonight, or you're good?
Very good, we appreciate it.
Wait, I have a question. How many employees do you have?
Fourteen.
Full-time?
Yes.
Any part-time?
We have one.
One, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you very much for being here tonight. Oh, we have one more question.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. So, my, my question is, is, you know, would the addition of the hardscape to your business, would that, you know, potentially add any additional employees to your business? Do you see any kind of growth opportunity there, you know, with this addition?
We hope so, we hope so.
Yeah, probably like, probably six more guys.
Six, did you say?
Six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Balkum.
I think I'll need to recuse myself from this vote, as we do business with each other, so I probably need to step back.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
If Commissioner Balkum is requesting to be excused, that would be appropriate for the board to make a motion and to consider whether or not to recuse him from that vote.
I make a motion to allow Commissioner Balk to reclusive himself from this decision.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you can step out, thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on. You actually, you actually don't need to leave at this point, because, well, first off, the agenda actually hasn't been adopted yet, and no, yes, yeah. So, just want to clarify, we haven't gotten to this actual item.
Okay. I wouldn't let him use the bathroom earlier, so I'm trying to figure out. Okay. We did not have anyone sign up to speak on this particular rezoning, is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak?
If it, if it please, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and close.
I will now close the public hearing.
If, if it please the Chair, would this be appropriate time to make a motion to expedite the decision on this rezoning item and add it to the agenda so that we can have a decision tonight?
I think it, I think it's certainly a, a great question, so when we get to the approval of the agenda and the consent, we can, we can add it there, if that's okay. Next on the agenda is item 25-338, presentation of the Lifesaver Award to five Sheriff's Office employees. I want to recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylan for this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, five deputies with the Union County Sheriff's Office are being awarded the Lifesaver Award for their quick and courageous actions. On Sunday, May 4th, 2025, members of the Baker Squad Patrol Division were enjoying breakfast at Stacks Restaurant in Waxahaw when they alerted that a 78-year-old man was choking. The man was visibly, visibly struggling to breathe, and the deputies immediately jumped into action. One deputy performed the Heimlich maneuver while the others coordinated the response, calling for EMS and fire assistance. Thanks to their fast and effective teamwork, the food was dislodged, and the man was able to breathe on his own again. Because of the deputy's swift response, the man made a full recovery and did not require hospitalization. The five deputies received, are receiving the Lifesaver Award tonight. It's, it's truly amazing to me how often we get to do these and how often our employees are in the right place at the right time. I'm going to invite Sheriff Eddie Cathy up, I think he has a few words, and then afterwards, we're going to invite each deputy up and actually present the Lifesaver Award to him tonight. Usually we do this ahead of time, and tonight, we get to do it in real time, so Sheriff.
This is just normal stuff for our agency. You know, they're, they're out there every day, they're on 12-hour shifts, and they're on 12 hours, no meal break, no thing, it's there every day, and I just, I'm proud of them, but I'm, I want you to know that this is their every day out there, so just keep it in mind.
Thank you. I'm going to invite each officer up, and Liz, I think we're going to take a picture in front of the diaphragm. Sergeant Corey Williams. Deputy Sarah Tucker. And Deputy Ian Barclay.
Our next staff recognition item is 25-351, GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I want to recognize Beverly Lyles, our Finance Director, concerning this item.
Good evening, thank you, Commissioners. It is my great pleasure to recognize our finance staff this evening for receiving the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. In order for our staff and our financial report to actually receive this award each year, this report has been judged by an impartial panel to determine that we have met the highest standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate our financial story and motivate potential users and groups to read our report. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting that can be attained, and it represents a significant accomplishment by our government, Union County, and our management and staff for the work that we do each year for our financial reporting. So, I have a few of my staff members here tonight to join us to receive this award, and if they would like to come forward, please. I have Ms. Avery Kukro, she is our Accounting Services Supervisor. Our CPA, that was on staff at the time that we actually did this report, she does a lot of hard work for this. We also have Brady Chaffin, who is our payroll accountant here with us tonight, and Mr. John
Are there any motions regarding requested revisions or amendments to either the consent agenda or the business agenda?
Buchanan, our Assistant Finance Director.
Commissioner Hams.
Several of our staff could not make it tonight, but we have 11 staff in total, there's a
I would like to make a motion that the board add a consideration of the item concerning
lot of hard work that goes into this, and we'd like to recognize these individuals
opposition of Senate Bill 205 to the business portion of the agenda, please.
tonight.
Okay, are there any other Commissioner Sides?
Madam Chair, would this be the appropriate time to add the consideration of the rezoning request to expedite the move for the gentleman on the landscaping business? I don't have the number of that right in front of me, but-
Twenty-five, three sixty-six.
Twenty-five, three sixty-six, added to the business portion of the agenda.
Are there any other changes? Commissioner Hams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would make a motion that we, for item 25-389, related to the dissolution of the Monroe Union Economic Development Commission, I'd like to make the motion that that be removed from consent agenda for further consideration.
Okay. Izzy Knight, anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the changes as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now at the business portion of our agenda.
Madam Chair, I believe we're going to need a motion to approve the consent agenda, and, and I'll make that motion that we approve that consent agenda as amended.
Okay, very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. That's this one, right? That one? Okay. We are now at the business portion of the agenda. The first item of business is item 25-367, the fiscal year 2026 budget adoption. I want to recognize County Manager Brian Matthews concerning this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, at the previous meeting in June, and we had the public hearing for the proposed FY '26 budget, I just want to go over just a few things, just so that we have that information. You do have a copy of the draft budget ordinance that was in your packet. Overall, we are recommending a tax rate of 43.42 cents on the 100, that is broken out a number of ways, I'll just say that, just so we have that for the public. There would be a portion of .1124, this would be for, let's see, County Texas, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my notes here.
Section three?
Yep, section three. You also have .0016 of tax for our county debt service. You would have .2678 would be for our education tax, and that is for all education partners. Then you would have .0389 for education debt service, and then finally, .0045, which is our economic development debt service tax. All those added together would come up with a rate of 43.42 cents. The budget overall of all funds is $620,330,001, that is all funds, that is every single thing that we have, that's your, your enterprise funds, as well as education, general government, all added together. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposed budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Commissioner-
I don't have to go first, but-
Commissioner Sides?
Okay, I guess I- Mr. Manager, I understand there are, have been discussions with the Sheriff's Department. One of the concerns I have, that hopefully is addressed in this budget, are the current vacant positions in law enforcement in our county, which I understand, the latest numbers I have around 19. And this not only, of course, there are legitimate retirements, folks ready to move on to the next phase of their life, which I certainly understand, but also a number that we are losing to other service units, including some municipalities within our county. And I have concerns, and I hope that you can allay the concern, that sufficient resources are being devoted to remuneration pay, et cetera, for law enforcement, so that we can address not only these vacancies, but opportunities moving forward to entice others to join Union County law enforcement. So, if you or other of staff could address what is included in this budget to address those concerns, I would appreciate it.
Certainly. So, in this budget, and for all employees, as well as the Sheriff's Office, there is a compensation adjustment for the Sheriff's Office specifically, which equated to $1, $1.5 per hour for all sworn officers, all sworn deputies, also as well as a 2.5% in COLA increase, which would occur in January of 2026. Now, other employees within other departments, it was a little different, that was a request by the Sheriff's Office to treat it in an hourly rate wage. It comes out to approximately about the same as the way we handled the other adjustments for deputies. I, I do want to say that we have worked very hard with the Sheriff's Office to try to work within our revenues and expenses, based on what we have, to meet their request. It does not fully meet everything that they've asked for, and, and without some other revenue source, we're not going to be able to fully meet what they've asked for. I am aware that Sheriff's Office has made another, I would say, request, but another way for us to consider how to address this. We're not prepared to make any recommendations on how to accommodate that at this time, we're evaluating their request. We will come back to the board with options of how you might be able to take what is currently within the budget and slice it a different way to get to what they'd like to get to, or at least close to it. I anticipate that will be in the July, August timeframe for us to bring that back to you, for you to hear, see, give us some feedback on. But unfortunately, I, I think we've done our best to try and accommodate all departments with the revenue sources we have.
And I assume that you work within the parameters of the desire that our constituents and the, and the board direction of being revenue neutral, and working within those parameters for all employees?
Yes, ma'am, and I think, I appreciate that you brought up the revenue neutral. I, I do want to point out that the budget only increases revenue neutral based on the voter-approved debt, that is the only increase that is recommended for this. All other department and expenses were based on revenue-neutral rate, so I appreciate you bringing that up. But yes, we had to work within that rate structure to be able to accommodate all of the, the needs of our departments.
Thank you. Did you have Commissioner Hams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just, just a couple of comments, you know, since we brought up revenue neutral. So, so first of all, I, I want everybody to understand that, you know, that's, that's been our goal the whole time, is to go revenue-neutral. At our last meeting, we had our public hearing, and obviously, the revenue-neutral rate is 41.6 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. You know, what we're looking at here is 43.4, so that represents a, essentially, 1.82 penny increase over revenue-neutral. And, and I want to just take a minute maybe to, to explain why and sort of point out some things. So, so first of all, we need to understand, you know, kind of how we got here, and understand that the general obligation bonds that, that the voters have seen over the last few years, general obligation bonds are used by local governments when they want to finance capital projects such as schools, or infrastructure, even parks.
So I appreciate you bringing that up, but yes, we had to work within that rate structure to be able to accommodate all of the needs of our departments.
Thank you. Did you have Commissioner Hams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just a couple of comments, you know, since we brought up revenue neutral. So first of all, I want everybody to understand that, you know, that's been our goal the whole time, is to go revenue-neutral. At our last meeting, we had our public hearing, and obviously, the revenue-neutral rate is forty-one point six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. You know, what we're looking at here is forty-three point four, so that represents a essentially one-point-eight-two penny increase over revenue-neutral. And I want to just take a minute maybe to explain why, and sort of point out some things. So first of all, we need to understand, you know, kind of how we got here, and understand that the general obligation bonds that the voters have seen over the last few years, general obligation bonds are used by local governments when they want to finance capital projects such as schools, or infrastructure, or even parks. And these bonds are essentially backed by the full faith and credit of the local government. They are typically funded through tax increases. And so, in short, when you go to the ballot box and you vote for a bond, whether that's for, you know, education or something else, then you are essentially telling local government that you approve of the project, and you also approve of the anticipated tax increase that comes along with it. And since 2022, the voters of Union County have had three of those. So since 2022, we saw our first UCSB bond for Forest Hills, and that was a total project cost, this not including interest, of one-hundred-and-thirty-four-million-four-hundred-and-five-thousand, I believe. In 2024, no, I'm sorry, also in 2022, we had a SPCC bond for thirty-two-point-seven-million. Now, understanding these two bonds, we had, you know, the voters were overwhelmingly for, so we had fifty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-four voting for the Forest Hills bond, thirty-two thousand and some change against. For SPCC, well, we had forty-seven-thousand-four, thirty-seven-thousand against. 2024, we had UCSB bond for East Union, and then the Parkwood High School design. That was a total of thirty-nine-million-four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and we had sixty-nine-thousand voters for that, and fifty-six thousand and some change against. So that brings a whole total here of over two-hundred-million dollars. And that's not including interest. Now, what we saw before is, we had sort of anticipated a five-point-one-five penny increase with all of that. Now, this is what the voters have told us that they're okay with, that they won't. So five-point-one-five pennies. And, you know, our staff has worked diligently to try to get us as close to revenue-neutral as what we can possibly get, and they've cut that tax implication in more than half, down to one-point-eight-two. You know, listen, I would love for us to sit here and say that we're at forty-one point six cents, okay? But the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, education is a cornerstone of our county, and the voters have told us that these projects are important. So this board has a due diligence, you know, to fund what the voters have approved. We have done our dead-level best to try to get this so that it is a minimal tax increase over revenue-neutral. But, you know, at the end of the day, again, you know, this is a voter-approved increase, voter-approved. So I just want to take a minute, you know, my observation of this budget is, is that this is an extremely tight budget. There's not a whole lot of wiggle room here. And so, I fully believe that staff has done the best job that they could with the direction that we gave them. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Somebody else have a comment?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Sides.
I want to reiterate my comments regarding law enforcement and the needs in our county. We have watched recently certain areas of our country have witnessed destruction, defiance, and absolute disdain for law enforcement. And that does not happen in our county. But to sit here and, without recourse, run on a budget which does not supply sufficient resources to law enforcement, so that I can feel like we will address the current vacancies, and the vacancies that will occur naturally through attrition, people move on, people retire, which I do not begrudge them, we all have a right to move as we see, but as myself, a basic responsibility is the public safety. And that, to me, is law enforcement. I have seen, as we had an example tonight, of the wonderful people, men and women of law enforcement, doing their job, going into harm's way, not knowing what one day from the next will unfold, and to be satisfied with currently, and Chair, if my figures are out of date, please correct me, currently nine open positions, either those working in our jail, those working on patrol, et cetera. But to have those vacancies, and to know that some of those vacancies have occurred because other services, other agencies, other municipalities within our own county are willing to provide the resources to hire our county staff, is unacceptable to me. In my mind, Union County sets the standard. We set the standard not only in performance, but we set the standard in what we will remunerate our law enforcement. And I will hold the manager to his assurances that this will be addressed by the next meeting in July. It's not too late to do whatever adjustments are necessary, correct? That's until we get ready to send the tax bills out, that is, we have time. But my resolve, I'll be very, very clear, and of course, I'm one of five, and my colleagues may not agree, and that's the way things work, but I am prepared and determined to offer whatever is necessary, and if that is additional resources, I will be glad to make that motion, so that our law enforcement is fully funded and leads the area in compensation and what other benefits can be provided in order to fully staff our positions in law enforcement, from detention officers, to those out on patrol, to SROs, et cetera. To me, it is not negotiable to do whatever is necessary in order to provide the resources for these positions, for these brave men and women that keep us safe, that are only thing that stand between us, our families, and the people out there that wish to do us harm. And at very least, I see my duty as a county commissioner to back them up. So I will wait to see what alternatives, what options the county manager will provide in a next meeting to address those concerns. If I do not feel they are adequate, and/or that the manager says that they will require additional resources in order to implement, I will be in support of that effort. And again, it takes three to make things happen, that's the way the things work, but I just want to put that out there, that my commitment to law enforcement is unwavering in doing whatever is necessary, in order that we have a full complement of all the positions are filled, they have the supplies, the equipment they need, and the training they need, so that they can do their job. And I will look forward to the results of your work, which I'm sure the sheriff will be more than happy to cooperate, and I have every confidence that you will leave no stone unturned to do what we can. And if the hard decision has to be made in order to fund those alternatives, I will be in complete support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sides. This question is for the county manager. So you indicated earlier, and we've seen this in the binder and all the information we've been provided, but I'm not sure I've seen an answer to the question I have. So here in Commissioner Sides, I have two parts. Are there nine current openings, or nineteen? I think there were nineteen, maybe?
Nineteen, and then one today, so twenty.
Okay, so twenty vacancies. So my second question is, when you were discussing the sheriff's budget, and you were reviewing that department and working together, was it ever discussed what the tax increase would need to be, to be able to, you know, meet the sheriff's, you know, budget request?
Right. So I don't know that we actually formally gave the sheriff, you know, hey, it's going to take two or three pennies. However, I will say that, you know, the original budget request from the sheriff's office was significantly higher than what, of course, we funded it at, and it would have yielded at least an additional penny increase in order to meet his request. I don't know that I actually communicated that to him directly, but it would have yielded at least one penny additional to fund all of that.
And today, after the revale, and going to revenue-neutral from where we were a year ago, a penny is approximately six million, a little over six million?
A little over six million, yep.
Okay. Is there any other information, like, do you recall in your plan what we will be able to meet in his request, or how much are we not meeting in his request?
Sure. And this is from memory, so if it's a little bit off, I apologize. I think that, you know, number one, I think the sheriff's office is interested in getting your entry-level positions, whether that be a detention officer, or whether it be an entry-level deputy, however, up to at least sixty thousand starting salary. That is not what we pay at this point in time. I think it's around fifty-seven, a little over that, is what we do, cover that as far as that amount. Once you raise that, you also have to worry about compression. Where is everyone else in relation to that? And that has its own impact, as well as your non-sworn staff, what will we do with those? And so, we really have to evaluate, how can we possibly slice that and accommodate that in some way? I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that can be done within the revenue sources that we have. So that's why we're not prepared to make any recommendations to do anything today. We're going to have to go and look at that, and talk to the sheriff's offices about, you know, what about some changes, we do something here, and then bring to the board, here are ways that we might can accommodate some, all, whatever of their request, and then you'll have to decide what you want to do from there. It's not a simple solution, there will be multiple moving parts to this.
Do you feel comfortable that if the board chooses to approve your recommendation tonight, that will there be any room for you to make a recommendation after our decision tonight?
There will be. Now, it may not get the sheriff's office to everything they want. It may get them to, you know, a partial, and I think that's our goal, is to say, we can meet them partially, and here's how we can meet them partially. But it's about, how do you accommodate it? What things do we give up in some places? How do we accommodate it? It's really about, that's the complicated side of it.
And the other alternative is a tax increase?
Other revenue sources, which our only main revenue source is a tax increase, obviously, I'm not, I don't think there's any cushions out there we can find several million dollars off of. So yes, ma'am, it would likely be a tax rate increase.
Commissioner Hams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, circling back here, so the revenue-neutral rate is forty-one point six, the proposed budget is forty-three point four...
Forty-three point four-two.
Okay, forty-three point four-two. So the overage over revenue-neutral currently represents essentially the bonds that were...
Yes, sir.
So the overage above revenue-neutral is, again, what the voters have approved.
Right.
Now, the modeling that we've seen previously is a typical, you know, annual increase for, say, a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty to eighty-two dollars, something like that. Any idea what another penny on top of the one-point-eight-two would require? Just approximate numbers? We looking at a hundred bucks? We looking at...
I'm going to, this is a guess, I'm going to tell you that, you know, for an average home, they're probably going to see it's close to a hundred dollars total. Because remember, we said that this rate is going to probably add another eighty to ninety dollars for a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar or so home. It's probably going to be somewhere in that one-hundred, one-hundred-plus range, if I had to guess.
Could you put that in your spreadsheet?
We will, we will, we will give you the correct number, once we actually do the math, my math may be wrong.
I like your spreadsheet.
But we will, we will try to give you that information.
Just from my two cents here, you know, I have no problem in looking at it and seeing what we can do.
Sure.
I have no appetite for any additional increase, other than what the voters have approved. Thank you.
Commissioner Hams?
Commissioner Hams asked my question, so thank you.
Commissioner Sides, did you have anything? Do you have anything?
I also understand everyone's concern, and I will look forward to what you have back up. Sheriff, this may be a question that you can answer best. It's a question of attrition, in other words, losing law enforcement to other jurisdictions because they throw more money at them. But it's also handicaps us in not being a competitive player to entice the reverse, the experienced, trained professionals from another jurisdiction to come to Union County. So that is not only losing our good people that we train and have experience, but because we're not in the middle of, in the game, from a remuneration standpoint, we have a harder time attracting those already trained and proven professionals. Is that, is that a fair statement, Sheriff? Does that make it harder?
It does.
Did you want to address that?
What you said is right. We don't have any place to have laterals anymore. We call them laterals from some other agency, Waxalls, Tylands, other agencies that are around. That's gone. We just don't have it. So when we lose officers, we're losing well-trained, that we, the counties paid for, that are, some of them are high-paid officers, that are making good living, and we lose them to Waxalls, Tylands, Cabarrus County on a regular basis, that we've already put the money in it, put the training in it, so, what he says is right, I mean, that's the way it works.
Is any of that attrition to retirements as well?
Oh, yes.
Yeah? Not just losing them to another agency?
It's not losing them, it's got retirements in it, several of them have retired, moved on to their life as it is, but what he asked about hiring trained officers, we can't find that anymore. We're not getting any applicants from any place.
Okay.
And would you say that's due to compensa, not being competitive from a compensation standpoint?
It's all due to money.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff Kathy.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for this board to adopt the FY-2026...
Madam Chairman, we have had some offline discussions here about the nature of the motion that's, or the action that's requested there. And if I could, I'd like to propose some additional language in that motion.
Okay.
It's not necessary for you to repeat it, but probably just to affirm what it is that I'm going to say here. So adopt the fiscal year 2026 county manager-proposed budget, and adopt the budget ordinance and recommended tax rate.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the FY-2026 county manager's proposed budget... Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the FY 2026 county manager's proposed budget along with the budget ordinance and tax rate as recommended. Any discussion? Yes, quick.
I apologize. I don't mean to monopolize the conversation. Mr. Manager, I believe that you, tonight because of the budget discussions, have postponed the presentation by the strategic planning and innovation team until July. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. I have some concerns about the, frankly, the return on investment in that initiative. But I will withhold those concerns and any possible motion until the July meeting, when those folks are here to defend themselves in person.
Thank you, Commissioner Sodz. I have made a note of that. A motion is on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. We have a budget and we will circle back on those other conversations in July and August. Our next item on the agenda is 25-392, Union County Public Schools' Presentation on High Dosage Tutoring Program. I would like to welcome and recognize Superintendent of the Year for the, was it Southwest Region?
That is correct.
Okay. We are happy to have you here tonight to speak on the High Dosage Tutoring Program. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. It's great to be in front of you this evening. I also want to say a big thank you to the Union County Board of Education for their leadership and support. I'm joined this evening by two of our high-ranking officials, Dr. Jonathan Tyson, who is our Chief of School Performance, as well as Dr. Susan Rogers, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Academics. And tonight, we bring good news about some critical work happening in Union County Public Schools. As a reminder, we are the highest performing large district in the state of North Carolina. We take a lot of pride in ensuring that our kids get a high-quality education every day in a very safe environment. And recently, we have received a two-year evaluation summary from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. This evaluation was commissioned by the North Carolina General Assembly as a way to measure post-pandemic recovery strategies as a best practice for school systems across North Carolina. And our model was selected. I'm going to go into the details a little bit. But basically, this is a summary of that evaluation of our high dosage tutoring model. To give you some background, we began this initiative in 2017 to really support persistently low-performing schools. When the pandemic hit, we knew we had to expand this model as a post-pandemic recovery strategy. The model itself actually came from work that I did when I was in Houston as a result of post-Katrina refugee and recent newcomers that came into that district as a way to help them recover from learning loss from Hurricane Katrina. We, in 2020, from 2020 to 2024, we actually implemented two different models. One model was the original model that we started in 2017, known as the whole-grade model. The second model, what was called the targeted tutoring. So you had two different models being implemented at the same time. And the evaluation and the research was which one is getting a better return on investment. The reason we were doing this targeted approach was because we were very worried about staffing. We were worried coming out of the pandemic that we were not going to have enough tutors that were needed to apply the whole-grade approach. 2022, this study was commissioned by the General Assembly. And the current implementation from this past year is only the whole-grade model. And you're going to see why in just a minute. Little bit of background, this work is taking place in fourth and seventh grade. It is only in math. It is during the school day. Many school systems across the nation say they're doing high dosage tutoring. They'll do them after school. We do not. We believe that we've got to capture our kids while they're physically in the building. And so this is taking place every day for all students in grades four and seven in identified schools. This is a pull-out model. What that means is during your math block or math time, students are leaving the classroom and they're going to a dedicated tutor that they're assigned to in a three-to-one ratio. So three students for every one tutor. And to be clear, this is not viewed as an intervention. This is not viewed as taking the place of something else. So our students are not missing PE. They're not missing art. This is actually part of what we deem as core math instruction. If you were to walk into our schools when we were in session, you would see pictures that looked like this. We have students that are divided amongst different cubbies in classrooms where we have available space. Sometimes you'll see our media centers being utilized in this area with whiteboards that surround them, small group tables. And again, that very small inclusive environment that is no more than a three-to-one ratio. The other important part about this that we're really proud of is this is not something that we purchased or got off the shelf. Our own staff, our teachers, our curriculum team, we built this from the ground zero back in 2017. The curriculum is ours. We provide the lessons to our tutors. It is very data-driven and it is consistent implementation across all the schools that are currently utilizing this approach. This is also non-certified personnel. So these are not always licensed teachers. These are individuals that can pass a math assessment that we created, again, back in 2017. They have to be able to know math, to teach math and to tutor math. That's really important. We do a very robust onboarding as well as mandatory monthly training for all of our tutors. Here are a few of the non-negotiables. We have a curriculum binder that all of our tutors use on a daily basis. We also ask all of our schools to identify what we call our champion. That is the support personnel for the tutoring initiative. They evaluate implementation efforts, progress monitoring. And then obviously, you have to have a dedicated space for the tutoring to take place. It's 30 minutes per day. Again, we do not impact core instruction. And then we provide all the tutors with their materials and resources. So here are some of the results pre-pandemic. What you'll see in the schools that we, that were implementing this. We had about a 12% increase in students that were proficient from 2016, 17 to 2018, 19. We sustained that student performance over a two-year period. And during that time, four out of the six schools that were implementing this actually exited low-performing status, which we were very proud of. The pandemic hits and then everyone takes a little bit of a step back and we try to regroup. This is what it looked like in seventh grade. We had a more significant jump in our middle grades, going from 36% proficient to 62% in schools that were identified. So clearly, before this evaluation was even commissioned, we knew we were getting a high return on investment in terms of getting more kids academically prepared for the next grade level. Post-pandemic, so for 2021, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, remember, our accountability data has not come out yet from this past year. What you'll notice here is we had a sharp increase for the two years that we were in a different kind of educational environment. Heavy rebound in 22, 23, when everyone was back face-to-face. And then we had a little bit of a dip. The reason for that dip was, remember, we were implementing two models. Right? We were implementing this targeted model, which is identifying kids based on an EOG score. So not everyone in fourth and seventh grade. But then in some schools, we were implementing the whole-grade model. I will tell you this, we firmly expect from this past school year, where we've only done the whole-grade model, we will see that line go up significantly, we believe. And this is seventh grade. Little bit of a better picture, continuing to see sustained improvements over time. And again, based on this past year's accountability scores, we project that to be sustained, if not improved upon. So again, and all of you received a copy of this report that I sent to you. Here's basically what the evaluator said. There were five findings. I'm not going to read all of this. But number one, the impact of the whole-grade model was robust. A year ago, I sent you the interim qualitative report that basically said, what you're doing is great, but you're not getting as much return on investment as the targeted approach. And that's why we stopped doing that this past school year. It's because we knew the whole-grade model was working much more successfully. We weren't getting the ROI we needed. So this past year was only whole-grade, similar to what we were doing post or pre-pandemic. Number three, the effects of the tutoring program were concentrated in the students that were at or below grade levels. So while all students were making progress, those that were at or above grade level were making even more significant progress. The fourth finding, we, students with exceptionalities, those that were receiving our EC services did not benefit. We would expect that to a degree. Because our exceptionally children's students, they are actually served also by an individual education plan. So there are other interventions that take place for those students on top of the tutoring. And finally, really important, it was cost-effective. It proved to be compared to other interventions, this model was extremely cost-effective. So this is kind of the researcher's findings. What does that mean in layman's terms? So take a look at the first bullet. To summarize this, what this first bullet means is, on average, students who were in our tutoring program in identified schools and grade levels, on average, gained a 12 percentile point increase in their math proficiency from one year to the next. And that effect is similar to national studies that have been done, such as the Tennessee Class Size Experiment. And really important for us and for our schools is, the effects and the impact are not just about fourth grade. These are students that are carrying that achievement over into fifth grade and they're not regressing or declining their performance. The other part about it, which I mentioned, is it was cost-effective. That when you look at our cost-effective ratios, they are either comparable or superior to many other interventions that are more costly, such as extending the school day, increasing salaries, class size reduction. So what we're getting is a high return on investment, for sure. And lastly, so where do we go from here? This is a national model that we believe is replicable in any school system in North Carolina. But it takes leadership, it takes decision-making, and it takes alignment with your priorities. We are preparing in the future to continue our whole-grade approach in the schools that are receiving this. We hope to sustain this. You all have helped bridge that sustainability with funding from this past year, which has allowed funds to go to schools that we believe will hopefully exit low-performing status at the end, or at the end of this year. And then I will take note that we have been advocating now for years at the state level for our local delegation to allocate funds in a state budget of recurring dollars to help support these efforts. And to say to other school systems, if you want to learn or implement, we're willing to give you the curriculum, to help train your teachers, come see us, but we need the funding to do that. And so I would ask that you help partner with us and our school board on advocating for our House budget and Senate budget during negotiations, that that allocation be placed and remain. Again, I thank you for your support. We're very proud of this. Very proud of the work of our teachers, our school leaders, our tutors. This is a total team effort that, you know, the bottom line is, we've always believed that this strategy was making a difference. We now have the research to back the fact that this is working and is impacting students across all of our schools. We're happy to take any questions or comments and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. Does anyone have any questions, Commissioner Sodz?
I have a question. When are we going to get a tour of Forest Hills and East Elementary?
We are working on a ground, or sorry, a ribbon cutting ceremony. Hopefully, that will take place in August. But we are on schedule to open those doors on day one in August.
So Dr. Houlihan, back to the presentation tonight. First, kudos to everyone that has supported you over the last several years, especially since 2017, when you introduced this tutoring model and you targeted, you know, certain grades, you know, to make sure that an elementary student would be better prepared in middle and that a middle school student would be better prepared in high school. And the statistics for our graduation rate in Union County, I believe, were the best in North Carolina?
Yes, number one last year.
And so, you know, clearly, these models are working. And, you know, again, that, you know, that's many thanks to our tutors, our teachers, our parents at home and forcing their children to do what it takes to improve at school. So, you know, it takes everyone. But while you were, you know, doing this here in Union County and it clearly caught attention because they asked you to come speak in the General Assembly a couple of years ago and asked you a lot of questions.
Yes.
You know, how did, you know, was it four schools come out of low performing? Did the state help incentivize Union County to be able to do, you know, this testing to figure out which model worked best? Did the, did the state offer the school system anything to help continue this so they could get the data?
So the funding from the state came directly to the evaluation team from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. I'm not sure, and Dr. Tyson may have answered this question. I'm not sure if the school system received any funds as well on that piece. I don't believe we did, but I may be wrong.
We did not.
We did not, he says. It went straight to the university. And so to this point, from the very beginning to now, this model is only utilizing local funding or where we can use state funding in some of our schools that are called restart, which gives funding flexibility. They have the ability to use the money the way they want, the way they want, similar to a charter. But there has not been another appropriation to the school system.
And there wasn't a grant that was given to you to do this study?
No.
So basically, we can thank the Union County taxpayers for helping improve the education outcomes for our students?
The funding for this study has always been local funding and/or state funding through other sources. But there has not been an appropriation of state funds directly to the school system for this.
Did you have any questions? Oh, Commissioner Hems?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Houlihan, just a quick comment. So first of all, thank you for being here. Yeah, many of us have long supported this program and certainly appreciate yours as well as all your staff's efforts in making this happen. Just my personal opinion is, is that this tutoring program has delivered results. And this should be an example to our state lawmakers that even a small investment in programs like this can offer huge returns, as your study has proven. One other comment that I'll make is, is that the effects of this tutoring program go way beyond the numbers that you showed us here.
That's correct.
The effects of this tutoring program, well, is personal relationships. I know that I've seen, you know, those relationships firsthand in UCS schools. I've seen children go up and hug tutors. I've seen children go up and thank their tutors when they got an increased score on their EOG. And so it has made a difference in more than one way. And so I'm more than happy to support this in any way that I can, including, you know, urging our state legislators to help us out.
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
Commissioner Hems?
Thank you for being here, Dr. Houlihan. When you get this year's number, would you please pass it on to us?
Absolutely. We'll be glad to update this PowerPoint deck and with the additional information and let you know.
And I want to, if you haven't already, I'd love for this presentation to be sent to us. You know, because there was a dollar figure. I don't know if you want to go back, but it was the dollar figure per pupil. So annual cost. And if I'm not mistaken, in the presentation, at those chosen schools, this was for every student in fourth grade. That it wasn't just, you know, a percentage of students. It was every student in fourth and every student in seventh.
Yes, that is correct.
So no one student feels, you know, pointed out or they got pulled out or everyone's getting it.
It has now become a, several conversations we have of them now when they're in fifth grade or eighth grade is, where's my tutor? Like, when's my time for tutoring? And I equate that to golf in a way that even the best PGA tour players have a golf coach. Like, this is about coaching and helping you get better. It's not about what you can or can't do.
I like that. So when you, when Union County Public Schools releases their per-pupil expenditure, is that in there? And I know, and the reason I ask is because we have 53 schools. But how, so how many schools are... schools, but how, so how many schools are getting this target, this whole-grade tutoring?
I'm going to get this wrong, but so, pre-pandemic, you're talking about 6 to 8. Post-pandemic, you're talking 15-plus.
Oh.
Because this model had early success. Principals and school leaders saw this was working. We weren't yet, after the pandemic, in 9th grade, but we are now. We've developed the same approach for Math I at high school. We also have been allowing students to peer tutor if they also pass the math assessment for 9th grade Math I, which has been another layer of this. So I would say that as of this past year, you're looking at approximately 10 to 11 to 12 schools.
Wow.
Which has been significantly reduced from 15. And again, these would be schools that were identified as either low-performing, or on that bubble, this was kind of a proactive approach before they became a low-performing school.
Wow.
But the cost that you see there would be included in the annual publication of the per-pupil expenditure, because these are all local dollars.
Right. It would just be flushed out among the 53.
Based on the school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, does anyone else have any comments or questions? Definitely keep us updated. When you get that anticipated good news, this year's test scores, whatever, please include us, because we, we're extremely proud of Union County Public Schools.
We'll do it. We appreciate your support.
And thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me just a minute to get back on track here, guys. Next on our item of business is item 25-384, Senior Nutrition, Municipality Participation. I want to recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nyland concerning this item.
Madam Chair, I have a short presentation. I know we have Senate Bill 205 to talk about. The applicants for the rezoning, I didn't know if the board wanted to consider moving them up to maybe be able to get them out of here a little bit earlier.
It could be a long night, right? Let's take care of that. So we will, I believe, was that 25-3660, or 366? So let's take care of that rezoning real quick. Thank you. And I, yeah, and this is when you can step out of the chamber, but do not leave the building.
Stay without those cookies.
Okay, everyone. We have language here in front of us regarding the proposed amendment to the Union County zoning map, CZ-2024-011. We have an option here. The Union County Land Use Board recommended, recommended for our meeting tonight that the Union County Board of Commissioners approve the rezoning petition, CZ-2024-011, from Angel... And I can't get the last name. Jivana?
Jivana.
Jivana, thank you, requesting a revision of the Union County zoning map by rezoning a parcel totaling 2.4 acres appearing on the tax map as Tax Parcel 09-372-050 in the Monroe Township from RA 20 to RA 40 with conditions. We have the choice to approve or deny. What is the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request.
Thank you, Commissioner Sides. Are there any comments, questions?
I just...
Yes?
I just want to make sure that the board understands the motion really should include the adoption of the consistency in a statement, a reasonable statement, because those are a part of that motion. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Oh, I was waiting until someone, okay.
Commissioner Sides, if you, would you like to amend your motion to the language stated there on the page?
So amended to include that language.
Motion to adopt the ordinance approving revision to the official zoning map of Union County, North Carolina, and to adopt the consistency and reasonable statement for approval.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Staff and Commissioner Sides, are there any comments or questions? Motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Thank you for being with us tonight. Best wishes for everything.
Good luck to you all.
Good luck. He's eating cookies.
He went to the restaurant.
Again.
Cookie.
Welcome back. We hope you saved some chocolate chips for us.
Yeah, I did a few less.
Okay, so we're back on track. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Nyland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Christina Helms, at the last meeting, had asked for an update on senior nutrition and where we were on some of the municipal participation. So I have some good news to share tonight, and I'll go through it very quickly. We reached out to all the municipalities. This is about the third or fourth time we had talked to them throughout this senior nutrition discussion, and we asked them to confirm if they wanted to participate, to take care of some of the individuals on their waitlist. And six municipalities have confirmed that they are going to take care of the individuals on the waitlist. One of those municipalities is actually going to take care of their ETJ members as well, which is not technically a city resident, but more county resident, but they are close enough to that town that they are going to do that, and that would be the town of Winget. That total participation is $41,722. There are two municipalities that have discussed it, have shown interest, but have not made the decision yet to do so. That would be Waxaw and Unionville. If Waxaw and Unionville do decide to participate, that's another $32,000 that would come in to the senior nutrition program. You can see the initial waitlist back in December of 2024, when we talked about this, it was 572. Our staff has worked extremely hard to verify the current waitlist to get as accurate as numbers as we can. As you know, this waitlist is ever-evolving. It changes daily. So these numbers are as close as we can be at this current time to being accurate. You can see 32 people will come off the waitlist because of that municipal participation. If Unionville and Waxaw decide to, that'd be another 22. So that's 54 potential waitlist people coming off because of our partners in the municipality. We heard from Fairview and Indian Trail that they, they would not be able to participate at the current time. Everyone else that is listed on there, we didn't hear everything back. We sent emails to the mayors and the managers of those towns. I will say that there is nothing necessarily special about July 1. If a municipality wants to come in in the middle of the year, they can absolutely do so. So this is an open invitation to all those municipalities that may wish to participate in the future.
So going back to Fairview and Indian Trail, I just remember when we first started discussing this, you know, several months ago, I remember the largest waitlist, you know, being Monroe and Indian Trail, which is logical, because they have large populations, especially Indian Trail being our largest municipality. But we only have six seniors on the waitlist in Fairview. Did Fairview give you any feedback? You know, could they not help 1, 2, 3, or they just said they weren't interested, or couldn't?
Just said it was a budgetary concern, that they didn't think they could work it in their current budget. We will continue to reach out to these municipalities to let them know that, to your point, if you can't support everyone, if you could support one or two, we can still work to get those people off the waitlist. But they did indicate it was a budgetary concern.
And before we go to the next slide, Unionville and Waxaw, you've been in conversations with them to join the other seven. Do they have an upcoming meeting where they're going to consider helping their constituents on the waitlist? And do they understand, if they can't do 15, can they do 5, 10? What are your conversations? And do you happen to know, do they have meetings coming up where they're going to consider it?
It, I do believe they both have meetings coming up where they're going to discuss it. It has not been directly communicated to them that if you can't help everybody, you can still help some. So we will certainly do that. We can send up follow-up emails tomorrow to those municipalities to let them know that that is an option.
Commissioner Helms?
Well, and also, if you could, the ones with no responses, especially Monroe, since they have the highest of 77 currently on the waitlist, you know, again, everyone that we can help is one off that list, but, you know, and continue to reach out to the other municipalities that, even if they've declined, to still say, you know, can you offer help to, you know, a few?
Absolutely.
What can you do?
Sure.
Like, maybe we can match them. If they, if they take one, we'll take one.
Yeah.
Just, just to try and take some of these senior citizens off the waitlist.
We can certainly do that additional outreach.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Just to give a program update, in the budget you just adopted, there was $127,000 to maintain the existing level. So that is the increase in food costs that we saw over the previous year. In addition to that, there was $244,000 to address waitlist clients. What we are planning to do is reserve about $50,000 of that to assist in any future waitlist participants from our municipalities that wanted to participate. Because what we don't want to do is, you know, those municipalities, Lake Park, they paid for four to come off the waitlist. Two weeks from now, they have two more that come on. We don't want to go back to them and say, well, now you have six. So we're going to keep a little bit of a buffer to be able to help them. So hopefully, we can keep them off the waitlist for the entire year. Remaining funds beyond that, we can deliver hot meals cheaper than we can deliver frozen meals. So we're going to prioritize trying to get those hot meal routes filled, because we can serve more clients by doing that than if we just looked at, you know, proximity to a town or unincorporated residents. We can do the most good with those hot meal routes. With current staff, we can add up to 110 seniors. Now, that, that includes the seniors we're adding from the municipalities. So you can see, if Waxaw and Unionville ultimately decide to join, that's 54 of those 110. So that would leave us about 56 people that we could add on our own. That gets us to the maximum capacity we have from a staff standpoint to verify eligibility, because they got to do it initially, and then they got to do it every six months, as long as they're on the program. At that point, our option would be to look at the part-time person we have that is helping with that program and reclass that to a full-time position. If we were able to do that, that would get us probably another 100 people we could add, or take off the waitlist. We don't have funding to add those 100 people, but say a Monroe or an Indian Trail wanted to come into the program at some point, and they're willing to pay for it, we could reclass that staff member and be able to take care of those individuals. We're not there now, but it gives us that option, that if we do have additional municipality participation throughout the year, we could do that. So that is a very brief update. There is an action requested. We have inter-local agreements, which are essentially just contracts with these municipalities. And you can see, we have Winget, Waxaw, Mineral Springs, Marvin, Unionville, Lake Park, Wesley Chapel, and Weddington. I added Waxaw and Unionville in there, just because we are in a summer session now. We have one meeting a month. If they do decide to do it at their next meeting, I don't want to have to wait until July and come back. So this would authorize the six municipalities that have agreed to sign on, and then the two that have actively talked about it. So with that, I can answer any questions, and if not, we just would ask for a motion.
Can you go back another slide? Okay. 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 I was surprised not to hear from Stallings or Stallings.
And again, this isn't, you know, we're not done. We will continue to engage them and talk to them about some of the options you presented, to where, you know, if you can't help anybody, or everybody, can you help some?
What can you do?
Sure.
Okay, did you have a question or comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Sorry, Patrick, if you can go back to that. There you go. First of all, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Lake Park, to Marvin, to Mineral Springs, to Weddington, Wesley Chapel, and Winget. Winget ETJ there, good for them. So, so again...
It's amazing.
Yeah, thank you to those municipalities who have, who have chose to partner with us. You know, we certainly appreciate that collaboration on this, on this program.
And I meant to single out Wesley Chapel, because they were the kind of, they were the first ones to start talking about this, and the first ones to vote on it. So we really appreciate them kind of taking the lead on this, being the vanguard and getting this whole thing started. Because I don't know if they hadn't done what they did, any of the other municipalities would either. So we do appreciate the partnership there.
Commissioner Sides?
Could I switch gears on you a little bit? With the budget that we just passed, do you have a feel, and I can get with Ms. Payne on this, how much of an impact we've had on the waiting list for in-home services?
For in-home services, no. I do not have that information, but we can get that to you.
And that was something I had asked about in our last meeting, and it's going to be an ongoing conversation with staff. I think there are some ideas that maybe we're going to be able to work on in July or August, or in the coming months. And we've had a conversation when we were setting this agenda, that we've had that conversation about in-home, and there might be some opportunities for us to, you know, tweak some things here or there and work on it. So it's, it's going to stay on, stay in conversation for us to keep addressing it.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not going to go away. So, anything else?
There is an action item requested on...
Yep. Is this, okay, where are... Did I get a copy of that? Or is this for, that's for the...
So do we just need to read that?
I believe this motion is just on the slide there.
Okay. You got it?
So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute agreements with Winget, Waxaw, Mineral Springs, Marvin, Unionville, Lake Park, Wesley Chapel, and Weddington within Union County for the purpose of receiving funds from the municipalities for the county's senior nutrition program, and exercise any renewal or extension term option set forth in the agreement, and terminate its agreements if deemed in the best interest of the county, each in the county's manager's discretion.
Very good. So we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item 25-323, Appointments to Boards and Committees. There are eight boards with vacancies for consideration this evening. These vacancies have been advertised in accordance with the board's rules and procedures. Applicants have been, applications have been received, and information regarding the vacant positions may be found in the background provided for this item. The first board with a vacancy is the Agriculture Advisory Board. There are three vacancies on this board. Three members have applied for reappointment, and a fourth application has also been received. I will now entertain a motion for nominations to the Agriculture Advisory Board.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Helms?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we appoint the following individuals to the Agricultural Advisory Board. First, William Bradley Hargit. Second, Tony Lane Helms. And third, Logan Watson.
Are there any other recommendations? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. The second board with a vacancy for consideration this evening is the Centralina Workforce Development Board. There are three vacancies for specific positions on this... There are three vacancies for specific positions on this board. The first being apprenticeship representative, second, an adult education and literacy representative, and third, higher education representative. We have received reappointment applications for each of these, as well as one additional application for these positions. I will now entertain motions for nominations for this board.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make the motion that we appoint the following to the Centralina Workforce Development Board. First would be Scott Pannagrosso to the position of apprenticeship representative. Second would be Kelly Stigall to the position of adult education and literacy representative. And then, third would be Heather C. Miller to the position of higher education representative.
Are there any other recommendations? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The third board with a vacancy for consideration this evening is the Jury Commission. There is one vacancy on this commission, and we have received one application for reappointment. I will now entertain a motion for nominations.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hams?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we appoint Gary Salick to the Jury Commission.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The next board with vacancies for consideration is the Land Use Board. There are vacancies for two regular members and one alternate. We have received two total applications for these three vacancies. I will now entertain a motion for nominations to the Land Use Board.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hams?
I'll make the motion that we appoint the following individuals to the Land Use Board for, sorry, bear with me one second here. So, we would need two regular members and one alternate. Is that correct, Ms. Clerk?
That is correct, and there were three vacancies.
Okay, so, so we have two applications?
And two applications.
And, okay. All right, then I'll make the motion that we appoint the following to the Land Use Board as regular members. That would be Douglas E. McLue, and then also Charles Walcup Jr.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Nursing Home Advisory Committee also has two vacancies for consideration. We have received two applications for reappointment to this committee. I will now entertain a motion for nominations to this committee. Commissioner Hams? You're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make the motion that we appoint the following individuals to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. The first would be Marie C. Robertson. The second is Sandra Ewen Adcock.
Okay. Any other recommendations? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next board with vacancies for consideration is the Region F Area Aging Advisory Committee. There are vacancies for two regular members and one alternate. We received two applications for reappointments and one additional application. Only two of these applicants are eligible for regular member appointments. I will now entertain a motion for nominations to this board. Commissioner Hams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make the motion that we appoint to the Region F Area Aging Advisory Committee as regular members Kathleen Demansky and Hannah Seum. And then, as an alternate member, Alitta Galusha.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The South Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees has one vacancy. We received an application of reappointment and two additional applications for this one vacancy. I will now entertain a motion for nominations to this board. Commissioner Hams?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'll make the motion that we appoint Christopher Dugan to the South Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees.
Are there any other recommendations to be heard? Hearing none, all those in favor of Chris Dugan, please say aye.
Aye.
Finally, there, it actually says that, finally. There are two vacancies on the Marshville Planning Board, Board of Adjustments. The two vacant positions are extraterritorial jurisdiction representatives. We have received one application for reappointment and one additional application. I will now entertain motions for nominations to these positions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I made the motion that we appoint the following, Tracy Stancil and also Brandon M. Love to the Marshville Town Council, or I'm sorry, the Marshville Planning Board and Board of Adjustment ETJ members.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a couple of other items that were moved to business. I want to begin with the resolution on SB 205. Let's do that one first. So, just as a background, there's been a lot of discussion in all over Union County, a lot of the municipalities and unincorporated Union County, there has been a lot of concern about SB 765. We have even heard discussions from the North Carolina Association of County Managers. They have been actively communicating and sharing information across North Carolina. This is not just a Union County concern. There are counties all over the state that were very discouraged and concerned about SB 765. And early last week, I happened to be in a Centralina meeting when conversations came up that a lot of the items from 765 that we were hearing had died, and it had kind of gone away. Well, they slid those into a pool bill and moved items from 765 into this pool bill. And then, you know, once other counties understood that, our board again became very, very concerned after we were assured that 765 had died and not to be worried. Well, it's just under the disguise of Senate Bill 205 now. So, here we are again, ready to discuss a resolution to oppose Senate Bill 205, just as we did several weeks ago for 765. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Hams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Merrill. It's been a long day. So, Commissioner Merrill is exactly right. SB 205 began as a two-page swimming pool bill, and it was quickly passed the North Carolina Senate. It found its way into the House, and a lot of the same sponsors from HB 765 had some input on the addition of many different provisions that have increased the size of SB 205 to, from two pages to, I think, about 16 to 18, something like that right now in the final revision. And so, you know, you might be asking, well, how does that happen? Well, it happens because, well, you've got different committees looking at it, and they all make different additions or subtractions to it. But currently, what SB 205 does is, it's got many different things in there about land use. So, if you take it page by page, you're looking at page five, it eliminates required number of parking spaces. So, you can build a 42-story building, but you don't have to have parking at all for it. It places financial burden of roads on municipalities and counties. It eliminates local control of driveway traffic direction. But how this really impacts Union County and other municipalities or counties our size is that it eliminates open space requirements. And you may recall, but this board had a lot of discussion about open space requirements in December of last year. But open space requirements has been a huge, you know, topic for us because, well, you know, it's a density issue. And so, what they're doing here is they're essentially, they're not spelling out density requirements, but what they're doing is they're reducing the tools that local municipalities as well as counties have to try to control density. And density is a huge topic of concern to the residents of Union County. Density is one, the low densities that we have countywide is what really gives our county the character that we've all enjoyed. So, but it goes on. There's other things in here as well. So, there's subtle changes in there from like zoning regulation to development regulation. And that's a key, that's a key thing. So, even a small change in general statute can have huge effects. So, what you're doing is, is you're essentially saying, you know, okay, well, we're gonna, we're not gonna sit here and look directly at zoning. We're going to make that a much broader scope and make different rules apply that would limit the authority of local government and ultimately move that authority away from the people. So, there's other provisions in there about split jurisdictions. This was in HB 765. So, basically, what it does is it gives a municipality that has the ability to offer utilities, zoning, and planning rights over that parcel. This is pretty interesting because it certainly applies to what we do on this board. But on page 15, it eliminates the waiting period after a withdrawal or a rezoning application. So, currently, on our board, that's 12 months. So, if an applicant brings a rezoning to us, and that rezoning or that application is either withdrawn, which we saw a few months ago, or if it's denied, then under this bill, then that applicant could potentially bring that back the following day. So, it also removes subdivision authority from the governing board. It makes it administrative. It also removes all conditions and appeals for subdivisions. So, there's conditions on the appeal process. Under this bill, there's no more conditions. Let's see. Page 16 of this bill, it goes into, allows civil action for land use decisions. So, essentially, an applicant or a developer or a home builder can sue the county government or a municipal government if they don't like the result. So, listen, there's a lot to unpack with this. But ultimately, I think that the people need to understand is that our state representatives have been calling this, and I'm using that term generally, but the folks in Raleigh have been calling this a compromise. A compromise from HB 765, something that we can all get on board with. And you know what? I do agree with them on that. This is a compromise. This compromises government that should be for the people into one that is for special interest. And this is not something that's good for Union County. It's not something that's good for our state, and I personally cannot support SB 205, and I'm certainly in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions, Commissioner Sods?
Can you pull up the sponsors of this bill and where it exactly stands right now, what committee? And if any of our local delegation are members of said committee that is responsible right now with this?
It sits.
It looks like Mr. Kay may be looking for that information.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hams?
So, SB 205 originated, the original sponsor was Senator Jarvis. But perhaps Mr. Kay can shed some light on some things that occurred in the House.
So, we have limited records to go on, but that is correct. The primary sponsor of the original bill is the one that shows. So, the original bill to deal with local boards of health and regulation of private swimming pools, that's the sponsor of that bill that shows. This was amended in a House committee, and there are a number of folks on that committee. I'm trying to put my hands on a list there, but we don't have a good record of who voted how on that. I do believe that information is out there. I just don't have it handy off of the legislative website right now.
So, it sits in what committee right now? It came out.
Sorry, we're doing this on the fly here. I believe this was last in Rules Calendar Operations of the House on 6/11 of 25. That's the last information that we have here.
I have some information that we received in email. I was looking to see if I could answer that for you, Commissioner Sods. Give me just one second. Let's see. Because it seems like we did get some information last week with some names that had joined that, but it is not, we may have to send that to you.
Yeah. Mr. Kay, if you could just do a little research, exactly where this thing sits, who are the players behind it? And just, if you want to just email us out tomorrow or the next day?
Absolutely.
There may be some additional information that's out there, but in terms of what's recorded on the General Assembly's website, it simply went to the Rules Committee and was substituted there. They did not take a roll call vote. It simply is noted that it was reported as favorable, meaning that a majority of that House Rules Committee voted for the committee substitute.
So, this is fairly along in the process. It's not lingering, it's moving.
Yep. You? Commissioner Balkam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not too long ago, we were told HB 765 is dead. Nothing else to see here.
Yeah.
Move along, folks, move along. But here it has, the principals have resurrected in SB 205. And I just want to express my frustration and concern with the state representatives. It doesn't feel like, it doesn't seem like they are fighting for the people or working for the people. It certainly has the appearance of working for special interests. We can't forget, Union County, of all the counties nationwide, Union County is number 13 in loss of farmland. Not statewide, nationwide.
In the nation.
This is a real concern. I feel like a representative should be in the corner fighting with the people, and it's truly disappointing. These decisions on zoning and these decisions that will affect us here in the county need to be made as close to the people affected as possible. So, that's truly all I have to say about it, but I do wish we have greater representation for the people.
And along with those comments, I do want to say that I've received a couple of phone calls. I think all of us have received phone calls over the week. I think all of us have received phone calls over the weekend and today from Representative Dean Arp. Um, I was able to speak with him, um, two times today, and I, and I just want to say on his behalf that, that he has expressed, um, you know, it, um, a request from us to return his phone call and for us to work with staff, um, to give, you know, to look at two oh five and give him, you know, some things that he can, um, advocate for Union County in Raleigh. So with that being said, I do want to, to say that the, that Representative Arp has worked diligently in trying to reach out to us today, and, um, and I've had a couple of conversations with him today, and I appreciate him making that effort. Commissioner Hams?
Well, I'd like to reiterate a few things that Commissioner Balkum has touched on. Union County is one of the fastest counties in the nation to be losing farmland, um, and as we all know, no farmland, no food, and that's something that there's not a soul on this planet that, uh, isn't reliant upon. Um, it's, it's quite scary that some of our state representatives locally that are so willing to sell, um, Union County out, even though one of the, um, main talking points in this county that I know I've heard on the campaign cycle is how they don't want any more development. They want it to slow down drastically and try to preserve Union County as it is. Um, so those counties that are in favor or were in favor of HB seven six five, um, why not write local bills for those counties that want development? That seems like an easy fix because the more, majority of the state, from my understanding, is they don't want this. They've heard from, I'm thinking the majority of the counties have said no. And I don't understand why they can't understand what their people want when they said, stop, this is not a good thing for the majority of the state. If those counties want the development, then write a local bill, write a local bill. Um, so I, I'm, I'm very disappointed, especially in my representative here in Union County, um, how he's not listening to us. Um, it's more of what's in his best interest, and I'm very sad to say that. Um, and, you know, there used to be a joke going around, especially at the federal level, that elected officials needed to wear NASCAR jackets with all of their sponsors on it. Well, you know what? I think some of the state representatives need to wear NASCAR-style jackets. That shows who has bought and paid for them.
Ooh.
Thank you, Commissioner Hams. Any other comments?
Can't say it any better than that.
I was hoping I would be able to find that list of names, um, for Commissioner Sodds, so we will have to, we'll, we'll follow up with that, um, because there were some names, um, attributed to, um, the, the new and improved swimming pool bill. So, um, you know, apparently swimming pools, um, has a lot to say about roads and land use and parking spaces and open spaces and, um, buffer zones and who can sue who and, um, you know, and, um, going from a twelve-month waiting period to reintroducing it the next day. So, um, I had no idea pools, um, had that much power, but apparently they do, they do now. So, um, do we, so we have a resolution before us, um, opposing Senate Bill two oh five. Um, and, and I want all of us to, um, I know that when we talked about this a week ago, whatever, we were encouraged, you know, reach out to your, your, um, your North Carolina House Representatives, reach out to your North Carolina, um, senators. I believe we have, uh, Dave Craven and Todd Johnson in this area. And then we have, um, Representative Dean Arp, Mark Brody, David Willis. Am I missing anyone? Okay, so, um, you know, I encourage everyone, um, to, you know, return calls, have those conversations so that, you know, for someone like Representative Arp who does, you know, want to, um, you know, hear from us on, you know, what we would like to see removed and, um, I, um, I think, I think he needs to hear it from each one of us. So they all do, um, not just the, the one who, um, who called and, you know, wanted to touch base, um, with Union County. So we have a re, have a resolution. Um, I would like to make a mo, a motion that this board add consideration, um, well, we've already added it to the agenda. So I would like to move that this board adopt a resolution in opposition to provisions of Senate Bill two oh five that reduce local government's ability to shape and respond to its community. Is there any conversation about this motion?
I, I'd just like to mention, in the past, when I've had discussions of opposing legislation, uh, previous legislation, the responses have been, well, we'll carve out Union County, or we'll set thresholds for population so that Union County's not affected. I think that is a, is a sheep in wolf's clothing, uh, because those can change in a heartbeat. The next census could throw us into the wrong category, or the next tweak when it hits the next House or Senate committee could remove those provisions. So to me, it's very simple. It's either yes, or it's no. It's not yes, but, or no, we'll, we'll make sure it doesn't bother you, but, uh, I've gotta, I've gotta support this for somebody else, um, in order to get what I want on something over here. This needs to be a very clear voice. We oppose this legislation. We oppose any type of accommodations that would put Union County in a safe zone for time period uncertain. Vote no, kill this thing, and let the people closest to decision-making process in the municipalities and the counties make these kind of decisions, not the special interests in Raleigh.
I couldn't agree with you more, um, over the last several weeks. I mean, it has been very clear. They told us that this was to address, um, housing needs in six counties, six of our largest counties. Well, clearly not, because now it's back with swimming pools. So, um, you know, because if this were truly about the six largest counties, then, you know, the other, um, the other ninety-four wouldn't be affected. So, um, I, I believe Commissioner Hams wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Merritt. All right. So, so just real quick, um, I, I'll just add this. First of all, I agree, certainly reach out to our local delegation, but I would also encourage folks to, to reach out to the Rules Committee, uh, where this, uh, this bill may still reside currently, uh, but reach out to all of your state representatives. They, they all need to know. They all need to know, um, that this is a statewide issue that, um, that affects us all, and it's something that, that, uh, that the people don't want. Um, second of all, let me say this too, that on the topic of affordable housing, you know, so, so HB seven sixty-five, that was a huge topic there. And the argument was that, okay, well, we have to have, you know, massive residential development because we have an affordable housing crisis. The study was commissioned by the Home Builders Association. The study was commissioned by the North Carolina Real Estate Association. So you have to consider the source, okay? When you, when you see these things, you have to look beyond face value. Um, and so I, I would argue that, you know, based off of, you know, what I'm, uh, what I see professionally is you have a surplus of houses right now nationally, and most likely within the state of North Carolina. So, um, so I don't know that that holds water. But, but again, first of all, let, let me say this too. Thank you to everybody that reached out to your state reps for seven sixty-five. Uh, your voice is extremely powerful, and, you know, our board, our county, our state needs all of you to do that again with two oh five. So thank you.
Commissioner Hams?
And I'd kind of like to piggyback on what Commissioner Hams also said, um, that there was a housing crisis. Last time I looked, I believe it was on Zillow, there was over fifteen hundred houses on the market on Zillow. Now, they're saying a pricing crisis. Well, we can't control the prices, and I can almost guarantee, I'm ninety-nine point nine, nine percent sure that if more homes are built, that the housing prices are not gonna go down.
No.
Because the builders aren't gonna take a hit because they're used to making X amount of dollars. They're not going to reduce their prices. They're willing to let these houses sit on the market until they get sold for the price that they want. This bill does not address that at all, and it's not gonna help housing prices. We still haven't rebound from twenty-twenty when it went through the roof, and it's, they are coming down slowly, not a lot. However, this bill is not gonna do anything to help those that want a house, especially the younger generation that are at, fresh out of college. It's not gonna help them. This bill does nothing but add money to the pockets of developers and...
Realtors.
Exactly. So this bill does not address what they say it's gonna address. And again, there's not a housing crisis in Union County. Again, look on Zillow, you can find, uh, like I said, over fifteen hundred houses available today.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was able to find that email that you were referring to earlier. Um, and what I did also find in the legislative history is that the bill, while it sits in House Rules now, today, it appears to have been amended in the Regulatory Reform Committee of the House. The key legislators to note on the legislative alert that went out from the State Association are Representative Jeff Zenger from Forsyth, who was an original sponsor of House Bill seven sixty-five, uh, Mark Brody of Union County, and Matthew Winslow of Franklin County, who were also primary members of, uh, House Bill seven sixty-five. Representative Brody is the only person who was on that Regulatory Reform Committee that passed out the amended substitute. And then the list of committee members for House Rules does not include anyone from Union County on that committee.
What was the date of that email? So we can find it quickly?
Let's see, that was the tenth, tenth of, uh, June, uh, about noon.
At noon. And who was the sender?
Uh, it was the, uh, Kevin Leonard at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Commissioner Hams?
Just, um, one more point, one last thing. Uh, now, Mr. Kay, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the North Carolina General Assembly publishes their occupations, correct?
They publish the occupation that is listed by the members, um, themselves, yes.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I mentioned this when we discussed HB seven sixty-five, but, but those three, um, members that Mr. Cage just brought up, well, obviously they have direct ties to, to home building, um, within the state of North Carolina. So, and that is public information, and it is listed on the General Assembly's website. Thank you.
And, uh, donors, I think you, um, addressed that in a previous meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, um, opposing Senate Bill two oh five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think the last item that we moved to business was item number twenty-five dash three eighty-nine, the Joint Resolution Interlocal Agreement Amendment, um, execution and implementation, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, um, the dissolution and liquidation of the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission. I would like to...
That was tabled.
Oh, we ta...
It was, it was removed for a further, uh, for a later date.
Okay. I apologize, I had that on, I had that written down to take care of it tonight.
No.
Yes, okay, so how soon do you think we'll be able to bring that back?
Well, our next meeting's on the fourteenth. We can certainly have discussion with that, unless, of course, we feel there's need to have a special meeting.
Okay, okay. So, um, no later than July fourteenth?
Correct.
Okay.
So I assume you'll be reaching out to the city?
Yes, we will, absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, so that takes care of the things that we pulled off, and let's, um, I believe that will take us to the county manager comments.
Yes, ma'am. So first, I'd like to say thank you to the board, uh, for number one, for the adoption of the budget, for your confidence that you've given in, in myself and the staff. I know it's a lot of work that goes into it on your part. You've got to really dig into it. You have a short amount of time, and really appreciate your time and your attention. Um, and I also want to thank the staff. Um, they worked very hard to get this in front of you, get a balanced budget, to keep that revenue neutral or as close to revenue neutral as we could. Um, and that's why I really commend our staff for all the hard work they did, and thank you very much.
That brings us to Commissioner comments. I'm gonna begin, um, with Commissioner Balkum.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, I'd like to take just a minute to honor and remember, um, Mr. Tim Blair. He was a teacher, ag teacher at, uh, Pemont High School. He taught, he taught me, I think we were in first class, that came through with him, and I would say there's no greater example of dedication and patience...
Yeah.
...than Mr. Tim Blair.
Yes.
Uh, he influenced so many young country boys and girls, uh, including our own Commissioner Stoney Rushing, who we lost, you know, recently. Um, he was a great influence on all of us, so I just would like to remember and honor him.
Thank you. Commissioner Hams?
Um, also, if you knew Tim Blair, um, he was a spectacular man. He was just one of the kind of souls. Um, he would occasionally come out to our farm and get straw, and we would just talk, you know, he was really good friends with my husband, um, and he taught my husband, and my son for that matter. Um, so he was just a great, great man, and, um, I hate that Talia lost her daddy right before Father's Day, um, but he, he really was a blessing to the community. Um, but I'd also like to, um, wish all the gentlemen, uh, that are listening, that are daddies, a belated Father's Day. I hope those of you that still have your daddy, um, I hope you hugged and kissed his face, hugged his neck and kissed his face, because I sure did miss mine.
I thought about you this weekend, Christina. I'm gonna skip over myself and go to Commissioner Brian Hams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I too knew Tim Blair, and, uh, I, I might have a slightly different recollection than Commissioner Balkum and Commissioner Hams do, because, uh, you know, he had a lot to do with wrestling out there, and, uh, and I had to run a lot in high school.
Yes, you did.
Um, so, so, uh, again, uh, well, my condolences to that family. Um, it's good to see Commissioner Sodds back with us.
Thank you.
Um, I, I miss you, buddy. So, uh, so I'm glad that you're back, and, you know, we've got, uh, Independence Day coming up, um, so we will not have another meeting, uh, between now and Independence Day, and so, um, just like to wish everybody a very happy and safe Independence Day. You know, obviously, Independence Day is, uh, is such a great day where we get to celebrate, um, our independence, our freedom here in the U.S. And, and so again, um, I hope that you all get that opportunity to spend with your families, celebrate what are, what are, what makes our country so special and so great. Um, and thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Sodds?
Um, might I inquire, when is our August meeting? The eleventh? I would like to request, formally request... I would like to request, formally request, an agenda item for the August 11th meeting entitled Replacement Union County Jail. And Mr. Kay, I will require your assistance to prepare the appropriate motion that I will offer at that meeting, and encourage the discussion and participation of my colleagues as they see fit, and then I will offer a summation, and we'll call the question regarding the construction of a replacement Union County jail facility, no less than 500 beds with a 600-bed core on the current site, and will look forward to the thoughts and comments of my colleagues and a vote, as they do, vote their conscience on that issue, and I request that for the August 11th meeting. And I want to thank my colleagues and staff for their hard work on this budget. Like most budgets, everybody didn't get everything they need or everything they want, but I can appreciate the hard work that went into developing this, to do our best to meet the needs of our county, and thank everyone for their hard work, and it is good to be back from a short absence after a little repair work, shall we say. But anyway, and I wish everyone a good evening.
So I'll just close with this. I want to congratulate the class of 2025, our high school graduations. I wish them the best of luck going forward, well-prepared, whether they enter the military, the workforce, or pursue higher education. I believe any student who had the privilege of growing up in Union County, I believe you're well-prepared to do well in life, and we hope that they'll stay in touch with us and let us know what they will be doing. I also want to recognize all of our Army service members and the Army in general for their 250th birthday. My youngest is now an active-duty Army soldier, and for the past three years, I've had the honor and privilege of working with all of our military veterans and doing casework on a daily basis, and so our military is very near and dear to my heart, and the people that I get to help every day in our office, but a very special 250th birthday, you know, representing and taking care and serving this great country. I do want to thank our staff and our county manager and everyone in Union County government. I just continue to be so pleased with what I learn and see and the work that everyone does on a daily and sometimes on weekends, having to answer questions. And Patrick, you've been a great person to work with. You know each one of us, you know, have special things in our county, the services that are provided, including council on aging, and I want to assure the community that this is something that staff, whether it's in-home services or trying to work with our municipalities, we are so grateful and thankful for the municipalities that have looked at their budget and contacted the office to say that they wanted to step in and help take some of our seniors off the waitlist. It's truly been remarkable, and I want to thank Commissioner Sodz for, you know, really pushing us to get creative and find alternatives, you know, out, you know, beyond the easy, you know, the easy yes or no answer, and looking for a maybe and coming up with yeses. So with that, I just want to wish everyone a good night. Thank you for the hard work again on next year's budget. We look forward to continuing the conversations, whether it's on the jail or, you know, what we can do to help recruit and fill those vacancies on our sheriff department. We'll have to make sure we have all of the information back from the consultant in order to have that conversation on August 11th. So Commissioner Sodz, you know, please bear with staff as we were, you know, following a timeline, and we'll do our very best, you know, to honor your request if we have all the information ready to have that discussion. So with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.